Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, November 25th, and I'll call the North Liberty City Council meeting to order. I apologize in advance for the lozenges in my throat. It'll keep the meeting quieter, I promise. Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Leibold.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Sittig.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Wason.
Here. Thank you. Item three is approval of the agenda. There are no changes. Could I have a motion for approval, please?
Second.
By Park, seconded by Smith. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda carries. We're going to bump the FY '25 audit up to item number four, so Dustin can get on to his next city meeting tonight. This will be item A, presentation of the fiscal year 2025 audit report with Dustin Opats from Bergen KDV. Take it away, sir.
That's me. Okay. My name's Dustin. I'm an audit director with Bergen KDV. I don't know how many years I've worked, we've worked with the city, but I was excited for the opportunity to present in front of you all. If any of you have any questions as I'm going through my presentation, feel free to stop me. I have such a passion for city finance that if nobody stops me, I'll usually just blow through the whole thing, usually without taking a breath. We start with the different reports that we issue. So the first one being the independent auditors' report. It's the most important communication that the city receives from us, is essentially what you pay us for, to come in, test, examine, issue an opinion on your financial statement. So we do give an unmodified opinion, which is the best we're allowed to give as your auditors, states that everything is fairly presented in all material respects on the cash basis of accounting. The second bullet point there covers the Iowa Code of Compliance on items that we're required to test. The Office of the State Auditor gives us a series of checklists that we're required to complete, and so we did have one finding related to that test work, and it's related to your budget. So in the state of Iowa, you are not only required to be under budget in total, but by each individual function. And so there was one function that ended up exceeding the budgeted amount, and so we're required to ding you for that. Next is the government auditing standards report. So because you are a city in the state of Iowa, we are required to look a little bit closer at compliance with laws, contracts, grant agreements, and internal controls related to those. And so we had two findings at a material weakness level, which is the highest level finding that we give. It's the same two findings you've received from us from the last number of years. The one that we beat you up on, I think at least the last two or three years, is the bank reconciliation. So since the city has converted to the new software, the bank rec process still hasn't been implemented fully to get the bank reconciled. We are able to get it close enough to issue our audit opinion and give a clean opinion, but it is an internal control issue that we want to make you aware of. And then the second one is the lack of segregation of accounting duties related to the small number of office staff that you have. And then that very last bullet point, that report on single audit, so that is not issued yet, and it has nothing to do with the city and has nothing to do with us, it's the federal government. Normally, we have a compliance supplement that is basically our roadmap for how the federal government would like us to audit those federal funds, and it typically has come out in like April or May, and it is now November and has not come out yet. I actually, I think it came out this morning, actually. So that was pretty exciting, you know, something to be thankful for, right before Thanksgiving. So hopefully, we'll be able to issue that report sooner rather than later, but as of the state, it's just not issued because we didn't have that guidance. Next, we look at the general fund. So overall, your general fund cash balance did increase by about 1.7 million. So the fund balance goal of the city is to have about 25% of budgeted receipts and on assigned fund balance, and at the end of the year, you were at 45%. So definitely well in compliance with that policy. Next, we look at receipts. So total receipts did increase about 13%, or just over $2 million. Taxes and assessment receipts were up related to an increase in the levy. Charges for services increased related to the increased usage of parks, community centers, and the pool. Licenses and permits increased related to some increased building permit activity. And then other miscellaneous receipts increased related to increased donations received. On the disbursements side, total disbursements increased about 1.5 million or 8.8%. Culture and Rec increased related to some new hires, increases in wages, as well as increased health insurance costs. Community and economic development disbursements increased related to some increased engineering. And then public safety increased related to hiring some new positions, as well as some increased health insurance costs. Next, we look at the enterprise funds. So this is your water sewer and stormwater. So enterprise funds are different in the fact that they are expected to operate like a business. Hopefully, the amounts that you're charging your customers are enough to sustain the operational expenses, as well as any debt service and capital project costs. And so this slide purely looks at operating income, the money that comes in versus what it takes to run the department. So it doesn't include debt service costs, it doesn't include capital projects, and it doesn't include bonds and bonds that are coming in or any of that. So you almost have to take this slide with the next slide, which will look at cash balances. So all of these numbers are very positive, right, because it doesn't include debt service costs and it doesn't include capital projects. So the water fund did have an increase in operating income related to just increased usage, as well as decreased water meter purchases and decreased refunds. Outside of this, there were non-operating disbursements of about $1.6 million in capital and debt service costs for this fund. And then on the sewer fund, it did have a small decrease of about 103,000 in operating income, and that's just related to more repairs in 2025. And then stormwater operating income was pretty consistent year over year. So like I said, you have to take this slide with this slide, just like what is the actual cash position of the fund doing? All of the funds' cash position did increase this year, pretty minimally, just related to operations of the fund. And that's me. That's my contact information. If there's ever anything that I can do to help make your lives or jobs easier, city finance is wild and hard to understand, so I'm definitely here as a resource for you all, but I'll take any questions if you have them.
Dustin, Tracy, and Ryan, could you remind us how soon the software that we're switched over to will show up and be not reflected as a ding on our audits? Will that happen next year?
It's hard to say.
Okay.
There are cities, Dustin can vouch for this, that have bank reconciliation errors and problems long-term. So Adam and I are working on it, but there's no, we don't have a date that it will be completely resolved.
Okay. Yeah. Are there any other questions for Dustin? A quiet crowd. Thanks for your help, Dustin.
Yeah. Thank you all.
Anything else? Okay. I'm going to move to item five, which is our consent agenda. Is there anything on there that you want to talk about?
Nope. We need action on the audit, please.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Resolution 2025-130, this is a resolution accepting the audit report for fiscal year 2025 as completed by Bergen KDV. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Wason. Seconded by Leibold. Are there any questions? Tracy, could we have a roll call, please?
Smith.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Now onto item five, which is the consent agenda. Anything on there to talk about? Seen, can I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Wason, seconded by Park. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda carries. Item six is public comment. Now is the time for anyone in the audience wishing to address council on an item that doesn't already have a public hearing attached to it. We'll welcome your comments.
I'm practically becoming a groupie. I actually didn't realize that we'd get to talk tonight, so I basically have just a couple of things. Again, I want to request, I'm sorry, I didn't tell you, my name is Artie Stoner. Like I said, I've been here a lot lately. I want to request again that you get an unbiased opinion on the validity of the changes of the comprehensive plan and the zoning changes and the need for impact studies before you pass it. I realize you're ready to vote on it, but I just want to go on record, and I want to make the meeting notes, that that is my request. That's on the urban central district that you talked about last week. Also, this is a totally different thing. I was looking at the forgivable loan agreement with UCD that came out in May, and I'm wondering if the Exhibit G, and if you're not familiar, I have a copy of it here, you can see, this is actually in it. May I approach?
You sure can.
Or you guys, it's Exhibit G, and it's just your budget. And since this is citizens' money, I'm just requesting that you take this Exhibit G, which is pretty big print, one single page, and include with it the actuals, which is basically a budget-to-actual that you would have on any budget. And since you just got done with your main budget, I'm guessing that you're kind of caught up with some things. And that would be nice for us to see what the actual costs have been so far, and how much of that $20 million has already gone out to UCD. Also, it'd be great if you could include any changes to the original agreement as it stands here. It said that any changes needed to be in writing, presented to the city, at least that was my interpretation of the document, not being a lawyer. Also, if we could have the AIA forms, which show the backup as to where those funds were spent and why. And I don't know, when is your next city council meeting?
The second Tuesday of December.
Perfect. Since I'm not personally requesting this, I'm requesting this on behalf of the citizens of North Liberty. If we could get that posted as an attachment with that particular meeting, that'd be great. That way, those pieces of information will be available to all of the citizens of North Liberty. Don't want paper copies. Prefer them there. I know that there are some charges if you request paper copies, but, and it says that according to Chapter 22 of the Iowa Code, you can charge after 15 minutes. I'm guessing there's enough citizens of North Liberty that we can find a way to get those particular pieces of information available to all of us. All right. Thank you, and I'll anticipate seeing it then. Please let us know in the notes or somewhere if that's not possible.
Thanks, Artie.
Thank you so much.
Is this your phone?
Oh, no, I can stop. Got it on silent at least.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Alan Chau, and again, like Artie, I've been here a few times. I won't stand so close to the mic, I have a very boisterous thing. I can whisper, and you can hear me in the hallway, so try not to be quite so loud, I guess, as I was last time. I just wanted to, I'm not going to repeat the things over and over and over again, I just want to state that it is very clear from us on the city, the people on this side, that your development plan states that, the application process states that a potential rezoning applicant and preliminary plat applications require a good neighbor meeting prior to the submission. I want it to be on record that that submission had happened prior to that good neighbor meeting. The $20 million loan had actually been enacted and finalized before that good neighbor meeting. So I believe that the intentions of city development has always been to disregard the people's input, because it's in your best, I mean, your best interest in order to provide for the developer, the handshake, the deal, the loan that you guys have already provided. So it was clear, it becomes clear to us, that from the very beginning, the zoning was going to get changed, because I don't know how a city and a developer would enter into a $20 million agreement without some backend promise saying that we're going to get the zoning redone, because why would a developer go into a loan for $20 million without knowing that the zoning would already change in the future? Now, there's been some misrepresentations, because they're kind of like not the full truth, so I feel like that is a little bit misrepresentations of some of the things. The renditions of what the developer has provided shows a lot of trees. That's only a very small portion of where the trees exist, probably maybe half of that line. So there's still half of the line that the neighborhood would see as the buildings, you know, from ground, you know, from railroad track level to height. The idea behind that is, is that it's painting a picture to get the votes, and I know that the votes have already been, seems like already purchased. So it's disheartening, as a person on this side, that the process was preempted. It was the cart before the horse. And I'm going to stand back a little bit. So it was the cart before the horse, because it's frustrating that we want to come here and just say, hey, there's other ideas that we would have for that area. The developer in that good neighbor meeting made it very clear that based upon that $20 million deal, he really couldn't put anything else in there. So saying that the zone is being changed, that way you can do so many other different things, when behind the scenes, the intentions are only to do that one thing, is misrepresentation of what the intentions are. So here, as the people were trying to say, we're holding you accountable, city council, that a $20 million deal was made ahead of all these other meetings that the people got to have input. So now, at this point, it's obviously to us a moot point, I mean, but I'm going to keep coming, because the problem is, is that something was made before us even having an input to it. So you already had changes to a neighborhood that we didn't like before you even heard that we didn't like it. I'm just going to kind of, just going to wrap it up with, you know, that it just, this deal was made too early on with a $20 million deal. And the elaborate explanations of what is acceptable for that area still only has the one intention, and that's what the line development has done. You guys have no intentions on putting restaurants or any other development in there whatsoever. It's just going to be these six buildings with high-intensity apartment buildings. You know, there's nothing else that's been presented, because nothing else has been presented, that something else would go differently in there. So I do believe that the zoning was done out of, that it was promised, because it comes across as that, that it was promised to the developer prior to any input from the people. But we just want to let you know, that's very disheartening as a people, that you guys made a deal that didn't involve us, when your process says you would involve us. So something is not driving here, and I am very disappointed in that, the way that came about. Do you have any questions?
During this public comment, we're not allowed to have a back and forth, except for me, Alan, so.
Okay.
I appreciate you.
Yep. All right. Thank you.
Are there any other? Okay.
Hi, I'm Catherine Chau. I just have one quick question, which maybe I missed, I didn't realize Dustin was not going to stay for the rest of the discussion, because I was wondering in the, from his audit of the fiscal year 2025, is that $20 million loan to the developer for the urban central district, is that part of the 2025 budget, or was that done in 2024?
Would have been FY '26.
I'm sorry?
We're on fiscal years, not calendars, so it would have been fiscal year '26, which is the year we're in now.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
The bond proceeds were received in fiscal year '25. Expenditures started in fiscal year '25 and continued into fiscal year '26.
So as a loan that was given out in 2025?
Nothing was given out in 2025.
Okay. I, okay. Thank you.
Are there any other comments for council?
I'm sorry, I didn't state that I was talking specifically about the item 17 on the list. I just made that clear.
Okay. We understood. Thank you. Seeing no other comment, I'll close the public comment. Item seven is our engineers' report. Josiah.
Well, Mayor, I don't really, I don't have too many updates today. If there's any questions about projects going on, looking at our report from last two weeks ago, we're kind of in a lull here between projects wrapping up and getting started in January for bidding and things like that. So are there any questions tonight from anybody?
You've got all the designs. Designs are complete, they're just.
They're all done. Just on the shelf.
Okay. Any questions for Josiah?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan, I'll ask you for city administrative.
Sure. Just a few things for me. We are anticipating having our FY '27 budget framework discussion on December 9th. We are, just finalized the presentation this week, so that's why it wasn't on tonight's agenda. So we'll take a few minutes at the next meeting to talk through that, and really, that's just kind of getting our feet wet as we really jump into the water in January to have further discussions for FY '27. Again, I don't mean to belabor this, but just a reminder that we just have the one meeting in December, which is on, as the mayor previously noted, on December 9th. And then lastly, I just thought I'd share a bit of good news with you. I think several of you, or most of you, were at last week's community luncheon that was sponsored by South Slope, and of course, the city participates in that in a number of ways, but we were, South Slope provided the luncheon, and folks donated and raised, were able to raise over $4,000 for the community pantry. So I think over the last three years, that puts us real close to $15,000, the last four years, maybe, it is real close to $15,000 for the food pantry. I stopped in there today to drop off a check that was mailed to me for someone who couldn't attend the lunch, and Ryan Boss, the director, was really eager to provide a quick tour. They just had 93 families in and still had food on the shelves, and he just commented how generous the community has been, not just, obviously, that luncheon, but other large stores providing food and others doing food drives. He was just very impressed and appreciative of the community getting behind the food pantry. That's what I have this evening, Mayor, unless there are any questions.
Any questions for Ryan?
All right. I'll move over to my report. Seems like everything happened last week. Ryan mentioned the community lunch. Several of us were able to attend that lunch last week, and I'm so grateful for Ryan's and Tom Sealeek's time and effort in putting that on, and the speakers that we have there. That was on Tuesday. Thursday, Paul had provided information to me and invited me to be a part of a ribbon-cutting for an event, and he mentioned this at the last meeting, a giving machine, which is located at Coralwich Mall, just outside of the Target right there. It's a pretty special event, pretty special machines, as you will, supported by the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints. They have them all over the world. There are about 120 of them worldwide, usually in cities like New York or Chicago, and we have one, three actually, here in Coralville. So the intent is to be giving to specific charities that are in these machines, and there are five of them. You'll recognize a couple of them. They are Camp Courageous. You can choose something in that vending machine to be of benefit to Camp Courageous. Catholic Charities is also another beneficiary, the Midwest Food Bank, the University of Iowa Healthcare, and Central Furniture Rescue. So if you are in the mall over the holidays, it's there until, I believe, December 9th, sounds about right. So for a couple of more weeks. Great fundraiser, going to those organizations. So thank you, Paul, for that invitation. That night, on Thursday night, I was able to attend the Greater IC Annual Meeting, as a number of you were there as well. And finally, on Friday, we had a Joint Emergency Communications Board meeting, and I've mentioned in the past that the 911 funding has been changed from the state of Iowa, forcing more local dollars to go supporting, to go support that. And I will send to you the PowerPoint through Ryan that Tom Jones shared with us on Friday morning, representing about a $350,000 loss from the state to support this fund that we will be coming up with here locally in the county. So I'll have Ryan send that out to you guys tomorrow. Those are the updates where I've been. I'm going to turn this over to you all then, now for item number nine, for 10, excuse me, council reports on things that you've been up to on behalf of the city since our last city council meeting.
Yes, sir.
I was able to go to one of the Lunch Connection meetings, because I was off that day.
That's right.
And had a presentation about some of the development in the city, and that was pretty well attended by folks from the area. We went to the MPO meeting, and for some strange fluke, nobody else did, but then a few of us, and stuff, so, but I am on the nominating committee for the chair and vice chair of the MPO, along with a few other folks, and we'll be a meeting, so we can get that wrapped up before January. And then myself and a couple of members of the management agency did the evaluation of the department director and did all the paperwork for that, so.
Thank you for doing that. Anyone else?
Mayor, we had our monthly Think Iowa City meeting, just a couple of things that came out of the report from Iowa City Area Sports Commission that kind of brought folks to the area. The Iowa High School Athletic Associate Girls Athletic Union held their state volleyball at Extreme Arena, and there were 30,000 tickets sold to that. Following week, there was state swimming, girls' state swimming at the University of Iowa. That was a first for that event, and it sounds like the girls' union was extremely pleased with both of those and looking to stay long-term in the area, so that's good for everyone. And then a couple of things upcoming. The Dan Gable-Donnybrook Wrestling Tournament will take place December 4th through 6th at Extreme Arena. Be 47 girls' teams and 37 boys' teams from across the country coming to that. And then on December 18th, Team USA will verse Ukraine in a women's wrestling duel at Extreme Arena, and the admission to get into that will be a, one non-perishable food item that will benefit the food pantries locally. So if you can get out to those events, please do.
Thank you.
I'd just add to what Brian said about the MPO meeting. There was no quorum, but there was a presentation by a representative of the Department of Transportation about projects coming up in the area, and the video is online, if anyone's interested, you should go out and look to see what's coming.
Thanks, Eric.
Excuse me. Also attended the South Slope Luncheon, and, you know, always look forward to that, and part of the fun of that one is the comedic stuff that Ryan and those guys do for that. It's very entertaining, and, you know, people should check that out, but we appreciate South Slope and all they do. Again, attended the ribbon-cutting for the Light the World Giving Machine. Again, a great, a great project there. Highly recommend everyone go check that out. And then the Greater IC Annual Meeting, and took a look, got a sneak peek of the strategic investment districts for Iowa City, Coralville, and North Liberty, and just some really fun, you know, ideas. I know I'm personally excited about the potential of, you know, maybe some art stuff coming to the Old Town area, potentially, so. And then, yeah, I'll let Brian talk about the Liberty Football Team.
Well, thank you, Paul. Didn't know that was my responsibility, but I'm happy to do that. Like a number of folks on here, attended the community luncheon, and just want to say thank you to all those who attended. South Slope for hosting, and Ryan's top 10 list, again, is something I'm certainly thankful for this time of year. Tended the Greater Iowa City Annual Meeting and had really good conversations with folks from University of Iowa, Coralville, Iowa City, so it's a really good event. I appreciate everybody at Greater Iowa City for hosting that, and all the effort that goes into that is not lost on me, at least, to pull that type of event off. I just wanted to share two things. One, first and foremost, actually, three things. Happy Thanksgiving to our community. At this time of year, we rarely get an opportunity to address those, address our community and say thank you. We've got two days before Thanksgiving, so I'm very thankful to be representing your interests up here and all of the, all of the staff and the work that goes into putting an event like this on, and just the way the city runs, I'm very thankful for that. Special recognition to all those on the Liberty Football Team or associated with Liberty Football. If you don't know, they were runners-up this year and had a heck of a game against West Moyn Downey, but just congratulations to the players, the coaches, the volunteers, the staff, all those who support that. But I wanted to tie the community piece to that. What a great demonstration and illustration of what it means to be involved with the North Liberty community. All the support from the North Liberty Fire and Police Departments, the city staff and administration, local schools and businesses, to see the thousands of people on the route as the. size of a community, when you see thousands of people contributing, that's what North Liberty is about, and I'm happy to be a part of that and happy to recognize those efforts and say thank you. And then just finally, Artie Allen, and I believe it was Heather, I didn't catch you for, Catherine, Catherine, just wanted to say, appreciate your comments and perspective. I know that there's a significant, significant amount of time that goes into some of the research and stuff that you're doing and offering that, that input on behalf of those that you, that you work with is appreciated, so I wanted to recognize that and say thank you. And that's it for me, Mayor.
Thanks, Brian. I'll move on to item 11, which is the SRF Water Revenue Planning and Design Loan. Item A is Public Hearing on Proposal to Enter Into a Water Revenue Loan and Disbursement Agreement. Does anyone wish to make comment on this agreement? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and move to item B, which is Resolution Number 2025-131. This is a resolution taking additional action with respect to a water revenue loan and dispersment agreement and authorizing, approving, and securing the payment of $1,144,500 water revenue loan and dispersment agreement anticipation project note, IFA interim loan and dispersment agreement. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Smith, seconded by Wason. You guys have any questions about this? Comments? Tracy, could I have rule call, please?
Park.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item 12 is Sunset Prairie Master Developers Agreement, and this is Resolution Number 2025-132. A resolution approving the master development agreement for Sunset Prairie, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Sorry, guys, I wasn't looking at who did that, but I assume Tracy's got it. Okay.
Park and Sittig.
Thank you, guys.
I hoped so.
I was thinking the wheel over here. I was thinking ahead. I just had one question. Russ, I'm sorry that I didn't get this to you in advance. There's been a question about Tartan Drive and calming that down there as much. Is it possible to put another small roundabout someplace between that little roundabout on the west side and the main roundabout on the east side, or has that been?
Yeah, actually, as part of the preliminary plat, we have a roundabout on Tartan that's, would be developer constructed. I think there was some discussion earlier today about kind of a tier of roundabouts. So, you know, our primary roundabouts at our major intersections, one at 70s would be a secondary, and then we'd have a third, which would be our neighborhood. So we also have a note on the plat that just because it's so early in the preliminary plat process that we would, the developer will work with the city to implement traffic calming measures on Tartan. So we're not exactly quite sure what that looks like. We're excited about the opportunity, but we made sure those plats were noted on there so we could pursue that.
Okay. That's awesome. Sorry that I didn't get that question to you.
Quite all right.
Are there any other questions? Tracy, could I have a rule call, please?
Sittig.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item 13 is Public Utility Easement, and item A is Resolution Number 2025-133. This is a resolution approving an underground public utility easement agreement for Outlot A of North Liberty Commercial Park subdivision. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Sittig, seconded by Wason. And Ryan, could you just let us, remind us what this is for?
Actually, I'm going to have Grant do that if you don't mind.
Would love to.
Buckle up. No. It's a pretty straightforward request from Alliant, asking us to allow, asking us to allow them to install a cabinet to serve the, the neighborhood and future growth in the area rather than giving just Alliant an easement just for them. There's already a 10-foot wide public utility easement that's available for any utility there, and widening it that by five feet serves out all of their needs and preserves the area for, for other, other utilities that might need it. So it's a pretty straightforward request, and it was an easy, easy one for us to, for staff to recommend.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, this is on the, the community center property.
That's right. Yep.
Along Cherry Street.
Along Cherry Street, along, near, near the sidewalk, about seven and a half feet off of it, I think, is where there's going to be one cabinet there.
Any other questions? Tracy, could I have a rule call, please?
Smith.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item 14 is the FY '27 Urban Renewal, and this is item A, Resolution Number 2025-134. A resolution obligating funds from the Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment financed obligations, which shall come due in the next succeeding fiscal year. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Wason, seconded by Leibold. Any questions about this?
There are just a lot of numbers here.
Yeah.
And they don't mean a whole lot to me, but.
Yeah. Would you mind? Yeah, Ryan or Tracy?
Well, this, this particular resolution is the annual appropriation for Diamond Dreams. And I believe, is this your, is this, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. We're getting close to the end.
You're number eight, I think, of 10. Or is it six of eight?
In this, in the report, right after this, it would tell in there what, what number it is.
But we're getting close to the end of that, but we do, this is, we, we have only one annual appropriation remaining, and it's this one. Now, we do have other rebate agreements in place, but they're not annual appropriations. So that's what this particular resolution is doing, is approving the Diamond Dreams rebate.
Thank you. Tracy, could I have a rule call, please?
You may. Sittig.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero. And item B is Discussion and Possible Action on FY '27 Urban Renewal Draw. Now, you want to give us some guidance on?
Sure. So this is a report that we are required to file with the county that just tells them how much TIF revenue we're going to need in FY '27 to repay our bonds that we have and any existing rebates out there. And there's a whole list of them in here, and so we do this every year, and I guess I would take any questions on, on the, on the report itself or on the reimbursement draw that we're requesting. It's the number 6.2 million, just over 6.2 million dollars.
Excuse me. Could, can I just ask that everybody that has a microphone, if you could talk to us a little bit, where it's very hard to hear and follow the discussion?
Thank you. Will do. Are there any questions for Ryan? And so possible action, what would you like us to be able to do tonight here, Ryan?
Just need a motion to approve the report.
Okay. And this is a voice vote, then? Is that what I read correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Could I have, are there any, have a motion for approval?
So moved.
I'll second, Mayor.
Moved by Wason, seconded by Smith. Now, are there any questions? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You are approved. Item 15 is Forever Green Estates Part II. This is item A, Resolution Number 2025-135. A resolution accepting public improvements and releasing surety for Forever Green Estates Part II in North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Park, seconded by Leibold. Any questions about that? Tracy, could I have a rule call, please?
Smith.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 18 is Special Speed Zone Ordinance, and this is Second Consideration of Ordinance Number 2025-21, an ordinance amending Chapter 62 of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances Concerning Special Speed Zones. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Leibold, seconded by Wason. Any questions?
Well, Mayor, I just appreciate the feedback from residents on this one, pointing our attention to it.
Good point. Tracy, could I have a rule call, please?
Leibold.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item 17 is Urban Central District East Res zoning, and this is Second Consideration of Ordinance Number 2025-22, an ordinance amending the zoning map district designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa, from I-1 Light Industrial District to CU-C3 Central Urban High Intensity Commercial District and P Public District. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Park, seconded by Sittig. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, Tracy, could I have a rule call, please?
Leibold.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 18 is Special Speed Zone Ordinance, and this is Second Consideration of Ordinance Number 2025-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 62 of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances Concerning Special Speed Zones. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Leibold, seconded by Wason. Any questions?
Well, Mayor, I just appreciate the feedback from residents on this one, pointing our attention to it.
Good point. Tracy, could I have a rule call, please?
Leibold.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Motion carries. And item 19 is Flood Plane Ordinance.